American Public Power Association Proclamation.
State of the Union, the United States of America, to their goal, to their mission, under power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. On a closed session, we would also like to add an inference to 143 318 11A 5 for the purchase of real property.
Can I get a, the adjustment? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise. Motion passes. Uh, can I get a motion on consent agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise. Motion passes. All right. First item we have is under administrative items, we have Clayton for you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, Council. Tonight, we're bringing you guys two episodes of Clayton for You, as we were, no doubt, that last meeting. The first is a episode about the upcoming road renaming, and then I'll go into the second one, which is on the Clayton Center's new Clayton Live app, which we're very excited about.
Hello, Clayton. We're stepping away from our regular format to bring you a special breaking news edition of Clayton for You.
That's right, Lydia. Two of Clayton's major roads, NC 42 West and US 70 Business, are getting new names. You may have already heard the news, but today, we're here to explain why these changes are happening and why they matter for our community.
Let's start with the basics. As part of the North Carolina Department of Transportation's redesignation of the US 70 bypass to Interstate 42, these roads had to be renamed.
Exactly. If we didn't rename them, there would have been some serious issues. For example, Lydia, did you know that I-42 would have intersected with NC 42?
I did, Joshua. And let's be honest, that's a recipe for confusion, especially for our emergency responders. Imagine calling for help and trying to explain whether you're on NC 42 or I-42. That's a split-second decision that no one should have to make in an emergency.
Absolutely. And let's not forget about US 70 Business. With US 70 becoming I-42, the business designation would have been eliminated, creating even more confusion.
So here's the big takeaway. The roads had to be renamed, no matter what. But by naming US 70 Business, Clayton Boulevard, and NC 42, Veterans Parkway, we're solving the problem now and ensuring these names will never have to change again, no matter what future designations come from NC DOT.
And that's a big deal. It means stability for businesses, residents, and emergency services. No more disruptions, no more address updates. This is a permanent solution.
Exactly. So if you'd like to learn more about this project, visit our website for full details and interactive maps. Thanks for tuning in to this special breaking news edition of Clayton for You. Stay informed, stay connected, and as always, stay classy, Clayton. In this episode of Clayton for You, we're excited to unveil a brand-new way to stay connected with the Clayton Center, the Clayton Live app.
The Clayton Center is more than just a venue. It's where community and culture come together. A part of Clayton's Town Hall complex, this performing arts center hosts something for everyone, from family-friendly shows and side-splitting comedy to concerts by artists you know and love. And now, with the Clayton Live app, you'll have instant access to everything the Clayton Center has to offer, right at your fingertips. With the app, you can discover performances you'll love, mark your favorites, and stay updated with the latest announcements and insider news. Planning the perfect night out has never been easier. With Clayton Live, you can explore nearby dining, nightlife, and attractions to create a complete experience, whether it's pre-show dinner or post-show drinks. And it doesn't stop there. The app keeps you in the know, so you're always first to hear about exciting new events and special updates. Take your entertainment experience to the next level. Download the Clayton Live app from your mobile app provider and unlock the magic of the Clayton Center.
So there you have it. Clayton Live is your backstage pass to everything happening at the Clayton Center. Download the app today and let the show go on. For more information, visit us online. And as always, thanks for watching, Clayton for You.
Outstanding job, as usual, to you and your team. I think the Clayton for You series has done, especially you guys keeping up with everything that's going on right at this moment. The change of the name for the roads or whatever, this would be extremely vital as us having to deal with people asking about it and everything. We got that, that we can point to. So thank you, guys, again.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have introductions and special presentations. Our first one is an American Public Power Association Mutual Aid Communication Recognition.
Mayor Pro Tem, Council. Thank you this evening, for this time. We had the opportunity to travel on a couple of different storms this year to assist other public power organizations with restoration. One of them was a nice road trip for the guys to Florida, no Disney or anything, but they did, we're in Orlando, but it was the thought that counted. But we did provide aid there. Shelby, they did get a week in Shelby. Saw a lot of damage in the Shelby area and were able to restore a lot of power. Got very good reviews from APPA Electric Cities, as well as the local government from Shelby, thanking the crews and the town for allowing us to send the crews to work. The Mutual Aid Commission was established in 2018 to recognize public power utilities that have answered the call for assistance and aided another community in restoring power to its customers. Mutual Aid is at the heart of what public power does, and the public power community thanks you for stepping up to help a neighbor in need, whether they're next door or thousands of miles away. The Town of Clayton has received a national commendation from the American Public Power Association for its support in electric power restoration efforts in Shelby, North Carolina, and Orlando, Florida. On September 28, 2024, Town of Clayton Electric Department began assisting with recovery efforts in Shelby, North Carolina, following the impacts of Hurricane Helene. On October 11, 2024, the department deployed five staff members to Orlando, Florida, to provide support in restoring power after widespread outages caused by Hurricane Milton. The Town of Clayton participates in the APPA Mutual Aid Network, which coordinates with utilities and authorities during widespread power outages. So, would round of applause for these guys. And we did get a couple of Mutual Aid Recognition Awards from APPA. So, thank you for your time this evening.
Yeah, just, you guys, any comments? So, one thing about Clayton being on the map, isn't it just about us that are here? It's what we do when you're away from Clayton. And the name that you guys are putting out there as far as that, so, for me and the rest of Town Council, we really appreciate it because you're a direct representation of what Clayton is all about. And just you guys going out there and doing that is absolutely amazing, and we really appreciate it.
And thank you, and thank you for your support.
All right. Next, we have the Black History Month proclamation by Councilmember Williams.
Good evening. Town of Clayton proclamation, Black History Month. Whereas, Black History Month was formally adopted in 1976 to honor and to affirm the importance of Black history throughout our American experience. And whereas, the history of people of African heritage goes back tens of thousands of years and includes some of the greatest and most advanced and innovative societies in the history of human experience. And whereas, African Americans have played a significant role in the history of the United States from the early days of the pioneers to our present-day leaders in such industry as aerospace, finance, government, and international trade. And whereas, during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the rich history and teachings of African Americans and bear witness to the progress, beauty, and achievement they have made throughout society. Now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month throughout the town. We encourage the celebration of African Americans collectively in reality, creativity, cultures, and traditions, and participation in community events honoring their contributions. Proclaimed by the Clayton Town Council this the third day of February 2025, Michael Sims, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. I would encourage everybody, Nathaniel's team, the media team, is doing outstanding job as far as posting things that have happened in Black history within the Town of Clayton. So, if you have an opportunity, please take a look at some of the amazing things that have taken place in the Town of Clayton. Next on agenda, we have Student Art Month proclamation by Councilmember Casey.
Thank you. First, I'd like to ask Ms. Susan Johnson to come up as speaker viewer. She's the chair of the Arts Festival.
Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Sims, members of the Town Council and Clayton citizens, on behalf of the Women's Club of Clayton and the Greater Federation of Women's Club of North Carolina, I'm here to ask you for a proclamation to designate the month of February as Student Art Month. The Women's Club sponsors the students of Clayton area schools each February by displaying their work in the Clayton Center Gallery and hosting a reception and award ceremony. This year, the festival will be this Thursday, February 6, at 6:00 p.m., and there are seven schools from the Clayton area that will be represented. We invite Mayor McLeod, Mayor Pro Tem Sims, council members, and Clayton citizens to attend the festival and to celebrate the creative art of our students.
Thank you. Now, I'll read the proclamation. Town of Clayton proclamation, Student Art Month. Whereas the arts in many forms constitute an important part of the community and contribute to the development of our youth. And whereas, participation and enjoyment of the arts can take many forms, including the visual arts, fine art, foreign arts. And whereas, the Women's Club of Clayton has sought remote involvement of our youth in various art projects to the betterment of their minds and the community as a whole. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Clayton that the month of February each year be recognized as Student Art Month. Let it also be proclaimed that the businesses, industries, and citizens in the Clayton community are urged to support and encourage the school-aged children of Clayton to participate in the arts proclaimed by the Clayton Town Council this third day of February 2025. Signed, Mayor, or signed, Michael Sims, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you.
All right. Was this, we gonna get a picture of that? Outstanding. Thank you for all you do. Thank you, Councilmember Casey. Next up, we have Customer Service Day proclamation by Councilmember Archer.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This is the Town of Clayton proclamation, Customer Service Day. Whereas, Customer Service Day is a celebration that recognizes and appreciates the hard work of those in customer service roles. And whereas, it's a way to show appreciation for the individuals who go out of their way to ensure customers have a positive experience. And whereas, excellent customer service can help strengthen relationships with current customers, as well as attract potential new ones. By showing how much you value your customers through providing exceptional support, you can build higher levels of trust and loyalty between them and the organization. And whereas, having great customer service means incorporating all departments into the process, from the sales to product development to operations. And whereas, this collaboration allows for more effective communication internally by creating smoother processes, resulting in better and faster resolution of matters related to customers. Now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim Friday, January 17, 2025, as Customer Service Day. Proclaimed by the Clayton Town Council this third day of February 2025, Michael Sims, Mayor Pro Tem.
Outstanding. We got some customer service people in here. Come on up here, Ms. Gaines, and snap her picture. And while she's coming down, I gotta say that we have an outstanding customer service department, and Ms. Gaines has continued to improve to help the citizens of the Town of Clayton.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for all you do. All right. I think it's my turn here. Yes, National School Resource Officer Day proclamation. Town of Clayton proclamation, National School Resource Officer Day. Whereas, the National Association of School Resource Officers is dedicated to making schools and children safer by providing the highest-quality training to school-based law enforcement officers. And whereas, SROs bridge gaps between youth and law enforcement and embrace a tried concept of school policy and serving in informal counseling, education, and law enforcement roles to support students and communities they serve. And whereas, by training law enforcement officers to counsel, educate, and protect school committees, the men and women of the National Association of School Resource Officers continuously lead by example and promote a positive image of law enforcement to schoolchildren and school communities. And whereas, SRO programs across the globe are founded as collaborative efforts by police agencies, law enforcement officers, educators, students, parents, and communities to create safe learning environments, provide valuable resources to schools, staff members, foster positive relationships with students, and develop strategies to resolve problems that affect youth with the goal of protecting all children so they can reach their fullest potential. And whereas, school resource officers are valuable and essential members of the education community and deserve unwavering respect and support from the public in the pursuit of keeping schools and students safe. And now therefore, on behalf of the Town of Clayton, we hereby proclaim February 15, 2025, as National School Resource Officer Day, a special day to show appreciation for school-based law enforcement officers and to encourage all citizens to show their gratitude and display support in personal messages proclaimed by the Town of Clayton this day, third day of February 2025. Michael Sims, Mayor Pro Tem. Let's get all them. All righty. Next up, for public hearings, we have the 25, 26 budget, public input by Town Administrators.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. So, as been customary the last several years, as part of our budget process, in advance of really getting into the budget season and developing the budget, we have had a public hearing to offer an opportunity for the public to provide input as to what they see as the priorities moving into the FY26 budget discussions. So this is an opportunity for that feedback.
Thank you. With that being said, this has been noted as a public hearing, and I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this subject, please keep, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. And also, please keep it to three minutes, anybody at all. All righty, I'm going to close this. And that's pretty much it on that. On new business, donation of surplus fire engine to the Johnston Community College.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of council. This evening, I stand before you asking you to approve the resolution to donate surplus fire equipment to Johnston Community College. The equipment, a 2006 Pierce Contender Pumper, which we have deemed surplus after it has met its useful life and has been replaced with a new truck. Our department has a proud history of assisting other agencies and institutions in need. Most recently, we donated an engine, fire engine, to the Marshallburg Volunteer Fire Department in Carteret County reflecting our commitment to supporting those communities who have, who may be less fortunate than us. The fire program at Johnston Community College has been a significant asset to Johnston County and our department in particular. In fact, we have recently hired three graduates from the Recruit Academy program, whose training has contributed to our goal of providing high-quality fire protection and emergency services. Supporting Johnston Community College by donating this surplus vehicle will help ensure that they can continue to train qualified individuals, capable firefighters who serve our region. We removed the truck from service due to a significant oil leak and coolant loss, both which indicate potential underlying mechanical issues. Recently, Johnston Community College lost access to their fire engine due to an unfortunate fire. Partnering with their program presents a promising opportunity as their diesel mechanics program could evaluate and make any needed repairs to the truck. This collaboration would not only provide valuable, hands-on experience to their students in the diesel mechanic program, but also result in a modern, dependable fire engine for their use. It's a recommendation of staff that council approved Resolution 2025-10 to donate the 2006 Pierce Contender Pumper to Johnston Community College. This donation will contribute to the continued success of their training program and ultimately support the safety and well-being of our community. I would like to ask Vice President McCormick and Fire Program, Program Department Chair Alan Johnson, Johnston Community College, to come forward, if they have anything to say.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of council. Just like to reiterate what Chief Rain said, we, if this is approved, we will greatly appreciate it. The fire truck will begin its life in the diesel lab, so it'll give real-world experience to the students there to make the repairs needed for it to go into service for us. While it will not meet your needs, since this life will live on the campus at Johnston Community College, it will be okay. All of our fires are set on purpose, and it's in a controlled environment. So this will greatly enhance our program. It will help us be compliant with NFPA 1403, which are the guidelines that cover live fire training. Again, we greatly appreciate it. And I will step aside and let Vice President Dick McCormick thank you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Generally, I'm a guy who likes to talk a lot, but Director Jenkins, you're doing such an outstanding job. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the donated fire truck. We really appreciate it. This will allow us to continue to provide quality education at Johnston Community College, and we thank you for your partnership. So again, thank you so much.
Members, council, any questions?
I think this is a great idea. I was present when we donated the truck to
I was present when we donated the truck to the Marshallburg Fire Department, and they were so excited to get that truck. And this is just continuation of another great program. I know, talking to our former chief, Lee Barbie, we had, we had stations that contributed to us like this when we were in our early days, so it's nice to see us paying it forward. And I, you want me to make a motion? Do I get to make a motion?
Yeah, to make a quick comment. I just think that this is a good partnership. I just love the collaborations and things like this, so, yeah.
And this definitely gives directly back to us in our community, right? And when you look at the resale market, the fire trucks are not great. And so this is like, you know, it's just, like you say, it's a great partnership.
Absolutely. To have a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the adoption of Resolution Number 2025-10.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Chief.
What's that for time?
Next, we have for fiscal year 24-25 mid-year budget update and amendment.
you probably all want to go through right now because you've already seen most of it. But for the benefit of the public, I wanted to go through our mid-year budget discussions that we had had a few weeks ago. So really quick, mid-year, based on some of the property acquisitions and some of the other decisions that were made along the way, we have updated for you the schedule in front of you that indicates after all those recent purchases for land banking opportunities, we are still in a very good, healthy fund balance position with approximately $1.7 million above the 30% threshold. So as part of our retreat and as part of our FY26 discussions, we will be looking at how we could best utilize those funds to be able to advance some of the current needs of the town. To be able to look at that in a little bit of a graphic form, we've got basically the blue portion right there is your restricted funds that were indicated on that previous slide. Orange is committed at about 1.1 million, 1.2 million, excuse me. We have assigned fund balance, and then that yellow part with the 30% target is the unassigned. So therefore, the lighter blue, if you will, 1.724 is what we have as discretionary funds that can be programmed for those needs. With regards to the FY26 budget process, right now, as you see highlighted in yellow, we are approaching the CIP review by the executive team, so that's going to be a big part of our discussion at council retreat as well as at the April, April work session, I believe. Staff have been submitting all their requests to Todd, our budget manager, for the last couple of weeks that kind of has a rolling submittal, just depending upon the different needs that we have, with the intent to have a good, informed discussion here in a few weeks. As always, our intent would be to hopefully be able to have an approved budget by the first meeting in June, but we always have the second meeting in June as obligated by the town, or excuse me, as the obligated by the state of North Carolina laws, we do have to have an adopted budget by June 30th. So that's how, that's how the schedule is going to roll out from here. This is a little bit different view of where we're at with mid-year budget. As we're current looking at it, there does appear as though we may have some cost savings. We are tracking these items because really the two highlights there are investment income with the feds not changing the rates as quickly as we were expecting them to. The actual interest rate that we are receiving on our money on, excuse me, our money in the savings account is a bit higher than anticipated. We had budgeted, higher than we had budgeted. And then the second part is our sales tax still continues to be strong. As we always caution, we wouldn't, you know, we're only halfway through the year. There's a lot of changes that could occur between now and June 30th. So before we feel as though that's, that's programmable dollars, we'll have to make sure that some of the other economic metrics continue on the path that they're on. But all in all, a good, healthy position for where we're at right now and a little bit better than we were assuming we would be just based on what information we had at the time the budget was particularly on the investment income. On the water and sewer fund, again, we are in good, good condition. Expenditures and revenues do appear to be tracking approximately on where we're at. There is a slight 726,000, and say slight, don't want to make it sound like that's a little bit of money, but in the grand scheme of a $60 million budget, there's a little bit of an overage there that we are looking at potentially coming through. But again, we have to look and see how some of the, some of the final numbers come in over the next few months. But all in all, a good, healthy position. On the electric fund, very similar. We are on track with both the revenues on the top bar there as well as ultimately our expenditures. There may be a slight surplus there again comparatively to the overall, but certainly dollars that we will look to make sure that we program and be able to offset any other, other costs. Major adjustments that were made in the first half of the year, really the strategic property acquisitions that we discussed, those, those were the necessary purchases to be able to secure our future for some several different properties that we, that we were able to close on. We now have the ability to build the two fire slash police stations or public safety facilities as we're, as we're currently calling them on both sides of town. So that is a big win as well as some of the other Parks and Rec and facilities investments that you all made. So kudos to you all for being able to have that foresight. Now we've got to go ahead and operationalize them and put, put those facilities in place. But other than that, those were the only major decisions, dollars and cents wise in the first half of the year. Budget adjustments, excuse me. On the operational budget, a few things that we need to consider moving forward. The library renovation project, at one point, we had looked at financing. However, now particularly with that surplus that we have above the 30%, the recommendation may be to go ahead and utilize Pago. So rather than take on debt service, go ahead and pay for that with, with cash on hand. That would also free up debt service for those other projects, particularly those public safety complexes and the facilities. Right now, the recommendation from the finance folks is to utilize limited obligation bonds to be able to secure the financing for those who are still several months, if not a year away from being at the point where we can bid, but we do need to start thinking about where the financing will come from to be able to provide those projects. So right now, limited obligation bonds is the recommendation, and we will continue to pursue grants and otherwise while we're investigating the use of those to be able to fund them. And then our rolling stock acquisitions, the vehicle replacement plan, as you're aware, there's a certain amount of vehicles every year that we have to replace to be able to ensure that we have a good, healthy fleet, reliable fleet. Currently, the, the plan was to take out debt service to be able to pay for, for this year's, based on where the numbers are coming in at right now. The recommendation may be to utilize cash on hand as opposed to taking on that debt service. So more to come as we get towards the end of the fiscal year. And then last but not least, just staffing overall, making sure that we're investing in our people and getting, getting the, the positions filled that you guys have approved for us. So overall, final thoughts to the strategic plan, that was a big success over the last year here. It's a living roadmap for how we want to be able to move forward here as the, as the town of Clayton continues to grow. So we will be, you'll be hearing a lot more about that at retreat as well as in the budget process as we move forward. Revaluation, currently, the property tax values are expected to increase at minimum 60%. I believe many folks have been, have received, or most have received, or all have received their notices of what their new assessed values are at this point. Many folks have been questioning, what does that mean? That is a question that will be answered as part of the FY26 budget process as you all elect to set a new tax rate based on what that revaluation is. And I have a slide on that here in a second. Overall, the town maintains a healthy reserve fund, so that is always good. Uncertainty in the economy or otherwise, it's always good to have good cash reserves. Our sales tax revenues again remain stable. They are slightly higher than we were tracking on last year, so if that comes to fruition, that'll be additional funds for you all to be able to reprogram. Our capital projects and programs included in the capital improvement plan remain a priority. We've got a whole team. We've been able to fill some of the needed positions on the project management side as well as augment that with some private consultants that are helping us advance those projects. So overall, there'll be a lot of activity on the town capital projects here over the next 18 to 24 months as those start coming out of the ground or get to the point where they'll start coming out of the brown, ground. At our next point, there's a 40% possibility of another interest rate increase by the Federal Reserve this calendar year. I think previous and last year, there was a lot of assumptions that the rates would continue to be reduced. We are tracking that. Finance Director Robert Mackay, as well as our budget manager, Todd Mellon, are keeping up with the latest and greatest of news as those financial decisions are made at the federal level that impact us. So more to come, and we will certainly make sure that you're aware of anything that would potentially impact our, our status overall. But as of right now, we, we feel like we're in a pretty stable condition. And then last but not least, ongoing recruitment of, of staff. The worker shortage, the staff shortage in this area is, is still impactful for us. We do have some open positions, so we are hoping to be able to get those positions filled right now, between now and the end of the fiscal year, so that we can make use of, of those, of those positions as, as efficiently as we can. But we are going to have to consider some additional recruitment efforts in, in terms of luring some new staff members. Excuse me. Real quick on the revaluation, again, this was just a desktop exercise at this point. I want to make it clear, none of these decisions are made. This is just for illustrative purposes only, but ultimately, if you look at the top left, that 60% growth factor in the base, that is more likely what we're going to experience. Our final scrolls will not be known to us for a few months still, at least a month. And in addition to that, anybody that may protest or challenge the evaluation that was provided to them, there's a process that has to be followed with the county, so we will not receive our final scroll tally until a little bit later in the budget process. However, for now, we at least wanted to get you guys thinking and understanding what that new valuation likely looks like for the town of Clayton in terms of revenue neutral or otherwise. So at 60%, your revenue neutral rate would be approximately 45 cents as opposed to 65 cents we're at currently. More discussion on that as part of the fiscal year budget, but we will certainly give, give you the latest and greatest information we have as we continue over the next few months having those discussions. So there were several mid-year adjustments that were recommended, that those were, were asking for approval here for tonight. Converting of a couple of positions from part-time to full-time, adding an apprentice in our electric department, you heard those guys today, they're rock stars. We're able to make an impact not only in our own community but across, you know, across the country in some cases. We're always looking for new talent. We've had an opportunity to add an apprentice within the electric department that we're hoping to be able to convert into a full-time employee. So that was a great win for us because those are challenging recruitment positions as a whole. We do have some additional needs in human resources for full-time safety specialists as well as converting our part-time file technician into an FTE full, full-time, excuse me. In Parks and Rec, we also had the need to convert a part-time athletics facility supervisor to permanent part-time to assure, allow for 30 or more hours. So the last but not least was the lobbyist contract that we executed with Electus last, last month. So those were the major recommendations coming out of the mid-year review. Again, overall, we are in a very healthy position from a financial standpoint. There's still some uncertainty that we have to allow to work through in the financial markets and other external, externalities that may impact where we end up by the end of the fiscal year, but our conservative approaches to how we've, how we've budgeted as well as folks like our finance department and our budget man, budget office staying on top of the current trends and where we're at have really been helpful for us to be able to make decisions. So overall, very pleased with where we stand today in, you know, middle of fiscal year 25. Lots to discuss as part of FY26, but certainly, certainly happy with the position we're at today. With that, any questions?
Questions from council?
I had, had one question regarding the 26 fiscal year budget. The, the budget survey that we sent out, are we going to be able to put that in the utility mailer invoices?
Yeah, I believe, Nathaniel, if you want to let them know everywhere that, that the survey has, is sent or is going to be disseminated?
Yes, sir. That will be going out as a bill backer, as we've done in the past. We'll be promoting it through our listserv as well as all of our social media outlets and anywhere else we did last year.
Very perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Great. Outstanding job as far as update. And just where we're sitting at fiscally, I got this crazy thing, like I don't have enough other things to do, where I watch on YouTube and stuff, other municipalities. And I just know that we're, we're, we're really blessed to have you and your team and just to keep the updates and keep us at where we need to be at financially. So again, thank you for the update and appreciate what your team is doing as far as keeping us Clayton where we need to be. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-01-03.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. So with that, which rich get on up here again, I guess. Regarding to staff reports, town manager.
Well, I think you've heard enough from me here, just in the short period of time, but I did want to reiterate that staff survey that is out right now, or excuse me, budget survey that is out right now, that has been very informative for not only myself and our staff, but also for this elected body to be able to make some decisions. So anybody that has the opportunity to take part in that, we really welcome your participation. Other than that, I'm done.
Thank you. Town attorney?
No report.
Town clerk?
No report.
Okay. So with that, going to open it up for public discussion. Anybody have any comments? Please state your name, come up to the mic and your address. That being said, we do not have any. So council comments? I just want to say that I am up here because our beloved mayor is home after some surgery, and we are hoping and praying that he is doing well and he has a speedy recovery. So next, can I get a motion for us to go into closed session for a economic matter and a, because we had an adjustment, didn't we, and a real estate matter also, correct? Yeah, yeah, for economic matter and a real estate matter and a legal matter. So it's three things.
So need.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose like sign? All right, let's clear the room. Let's clear the room.
For those who come before this council, with nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good night.